Recording in progress.
Welcome, everyone, to the April 3, 2023 Regular Board of Aldermen Meeting. Would everybody please join with me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Plufka?
Here.
Alderwoman Tice?
Here.
Alderwoman Sims?
Here.
Alderman Weggie?
Here.
Alderman Gould?
Here.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Here.
Alderwoman O'Neal?
Here.
Alderman Shelton?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. Next up is the approval or amendment of the agenda. Do we have any changes? Any objection to approving the same by acclamation? Seeing none, it will be so approved. Brings us down to Item 4, Public Hearing. We have two matters. The first is a public hearing regarding text amendment amending Division 5 of Article 5 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Brentwood, Missouri relating to fences, walls, and screening devices to address: One, the aesthetics of such physical security measures; Two, access to the public right-of-ways, sidewalks, and/or utility easements; Three, the structural soundness of such physical security measures; and/or Four, changes in the drainage of a property and accessory uses and structure where the fence regulations are discussed. With that, we'll gavel open that public hearing.
Good evening. Whitney Kelly, on behalf of the City of Brentwood. This came out of last year at the Planning and Zoning Commission because the Board of Adjust- Board of, yeah, Adjustment, sorry, received a request for fence variance, and they, their concern was should this really be at the Board of Adjustment, or should it be at the Planning and Zoning Commission? So then we wanted to take the chance to relook at the whole ordinance, maybe clarify, simplify some of the language, get rid of duplicate regulations that are elsewhere in the code, and address any of the state legislation that came up. So, the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this in December, as well as February, and then made their recommendation in March.
Okay. Any questions for Whitney? Now, we'll take that up later. Thank you. We'll close the public hearing on that, on Item 4A, and that brings us down to Item 4B, which is a public hearing regarding text amendment amending Section 400.1880, lighting of the zoning code relating to new LED lights have a maximum lighting for, to corrected color temperature, to 2,700,000 in furtherance of the public health and safety due to artificial lighting levels. Okay, so that's the open, that's the, the public here. We're gonna gavel that open. This matter is not ready to take up tonight because Planning and Zoning has asked for some additional information. So, first of all, does anybody have any questions about this item? Now, you'll have an opportunity at the, at the, the next meeting. But to that effect, can I get a motion to continue this to the April 17, 2023 meeting? The moved.
Second.
We got a motion to continue the public hearing to April 17, 2023. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
And we shall keep this matter open until April 7th. The pub, the public hearing opened until April 17, 2023. Brings us down to Citizen Comments. Anybody in the public care to address the board? Now is the time to do so. You will be given up to three minutes. Nobody online?
No members online.
Okay, we have nobody in, in the chambers and nobody online, so we move on to Mayor and Alderman Reports. First up is the Mayor Report. We have a few things. First, I want to read something about the, the retirement of Sergeant Chris Gibson. "After serving the Brentwood community for 24 years, Sergeant Chris Gibson has announced his retirement from the City of Brentwood Police Department effective March 28, 2023. Sergeant Gibson began his career in law enforcement with the St. Louis Metropolitan Police Department in November of 1994. He joined the City of Brentwood Police Department on June 21, 1999. Sergeant Gibson has held several positions within the police department, including detective, school resource officer, dare officer, corporal patrol sergeant, firearms range master, taser instructor, and training coordinator. Sergeant Gibson was instrumental in transforming the firearms training unit by expanding the skills instruction to include scenario-based training, adding several other firearms instructors, and incorporating industry-leading tactics and life-saving techniques. Sergeant Gibson initiated training for the Brentwood police officers on the use of the CAT tourniquet and less lethal weapons. He also created Missouri Post Certified Officer Safety Role Play Training for the Brentwood police officers. The training consists of dynamic, real-life scenarios with role players and simulated weapons designed to increase officer awareness, reinforce de-escalation techniques while maintaining an over-focus on officer safety. Sergeant Gibson advocated for industry-leading training and technology to enhance the overall mission of the Brentwood Police Department. On behalf of a grateful Brentwood community, the City of Brentwood Police Department would like to congratulate Sergeant Chris Gibson on an outstanding career and wish him and his family all the best as he begins the next chapter of his life." Just a few more items. Tomorrow is Election Day, and on the ballot is Proposition M for the City of Brentwood, and I will not go into what that is for fear that I might misrepresent or mistake what that is. But I would encourage anybody who's watching tonight to do some research on that before tomorrow's Election Day. Secondly, there are candidates on the April 4 election ballot tomorrow. The following candidates are up for election tomorrow. That is Mayor. There's two-year terms. David Dimmitt and Robert Montague. For Municipal Judge, also for a two-year term. Running unopposed is Patrick Dignam. And then the four alderpersons, all of which are running unopposed and for two-year terms. For Ward 1, we have David Plufka. Ward 2, Brandon Weggie. Ward 3, Steve Lockmiller. And Ward 4, Jack Shelton. Good luck to you four tomorrow. And an update on the Lee Wind Trail Repair Project. If you've noticed, as you, if you've been driving down on the, the road leading to Litzinger Road Bridge, you'll notice that there's a lane that has been closed. That's because of castle construction. The Board approved that, I think, maybe at the last meeting. And that's how quickly Castle is moving on this thing. I was down there over the weekend and admiring all the, all the work that is, is going on and how quickly they are moving. But essentially, it is an effort to shore back up that bank and allow us to rebuild the Lee Wind Trail and put it back in its, in a, in a safe condition so that it will not collapse again if there's another heavy rain event. And again, the cost for that is a little over half million dollars that the Board approved. And so, that's, that's going, that's coming right along. Russell Avenue is closed between Brentwood Boulevard and Collier Avenue. Russell Avenue is closed for Metropolitan Sewer District sewer repair work through April 15. Russell Avenue is completely closed to all traffic west of Brentwood Boulevard. The businesses at the corner of Russell Avenue and Brentwood Boulevard are accessible from Brentwood Boulevard only. And finally, the Brentwood Park, we are having a grand opening for the public on June 30, from 11 to 2? June 3rd? Just making sure everybody's listening. June 3rd, that is a Saturday. And so, we invite everybody to attend. There will be a lot more going on, a lot more notice about that as we get closer to the date. So, that is it for the Mayor Report. And brings us down to Alderman Plufka.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Safety Committee will meet tomorrow here at 5:30 PM on Election Night. We will take up only one topic, and that is whether Brentwood and two other municipalities should invest in a fire training facility. That is the topic. I encourage everybody who's listening, who's here tonight, to come back and attend for the Public Safety Meeting that night. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Alderwoman Tice?
No report.
Alderman Weggie? Alderwoman Sims?
No report.
Alderman Lockmiller?
No report.
Alderman Gould?
Yes, a couple of weeks away, but our next Communications Committee is, is on Tuesday, the 18th, Tax Day. So, awesome day to come out and learn, and talk to us about some communications. That's right after our next Ward Meeting, so that's why I'm giving everybody a heads up now. I also wanted to thank Lieutenant Simpson and Corporal Lambert for showing up at our Ward 3 meeting recently. They had really great things to say and had actually fairly long engagement with citizens, and I just, I just wanted to say appreciate that, their involvement.
Thank you. Alderman Shelton?
The report.
And Alderwoman O'Neal.
No report.
All right. Moves us down to City Administrator Report. We have one item, and that's our Brentwood Bound Update.
Thank you. Good evening. Craig Shelton with Navigate Building Solutions. I'll be providing the Brentwood Bound Update. So, we had very few expenditures, just one to be exact. In soft costs, $3,575 was spent on legal fees since the last Board of Aldermen meeting. There was an update to the categories of funding. If you go to the additional funding sources, the city's been very strategic about continuing to invest their COP funds. So, the new projection from arbitrage is $142,256.19 will be gained from the 2019 COP Investment Fund.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Okay, then if... Thank you, thank you. Okay, thank you. We are going to, still under the, so that's it for Craig, right?
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Craig. We have two items, actually, under the City Administrator Report. Our City Administrator reminded me. I've asked Eric to come and give us an update on the status of the Brentwood Sports Complex in general and in particular, Field 1. As you might have, you may have been contacted by some residents over the last day or so about the questions and concerns that they have, and I thought it'd be best for Eric to have a chance to address those.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. As you guys know, we've been struggling with Field 1 for, since last July, primarily due to the floods that came through in July and early August. As we discussed in Public Works, we really had two options this year. And the first option was to shut down the field, basically rip out all the sod, re-level everything, install new sod, and get it ready really for the 2024 season. After discussion with the Public Works Committee and the high school, we decided that that probably wouldn't be the best option. We wanted to make sure we're able to do the best we could to get the high school season in. So, in conversations with the Brentwood Athletic Director, we kind of laid out pretty honestly what the outfield might look like. It's, it was gonna be a rough year because we have low spots. There's still all the rock damage in right field that we had to remove, and we wanted to make sure that they understood that it wasn't gonna be the best field that they've, they've seen. He understood. We talked, if there was a chance he could go somewhere else, and he said, "We don't have anywhere else to go." Maple Ridge and Heights plays in Deer Creek Park. They cannot play on that field because of the flooding as well. U City plays in Human Park. They can't play on their field because of the flooding as well. So, it was, let's put a very large Band-Aid on this field until we can get through this year. So, that's what we did. We talked about with Public Works Committee what the two phases would be. And the first phase would really to get the, the dirt and infield leveled out because we lost so much material during that, during that storm event. To get it leveled out so that there wouldn't be, hopefully, any puddles throughout the season when we get rain events, and knock on wood, if you're sitting out there after a couple of heavy rains, our, the infield dirt has held pretty well. Can't say the same for the outfield, but the infield dirt has held pretty well. Anything that had to do with turf, if we leveled it out, we'd have to rip out the turf. At that point, if you try to sod it, that sod's not gonna take, and you create even a more dangerous situation than you might have right now. And so, we were concerned about doing any of that work. And then especially with Brentwood Days coming afterwards, the thought process was to do the outfield work after Brentwood Days, let it sit for this winter, and then hopefully that field will be ready completely for next year. That was kind of the update of this year. We all know that we've had trouble with, with floods down in Brentwood Park. I've talked about it for 10 years. Bull is tired of me talking about flooding down in Brentwood Park. And we know what's happened in the past five to 10 years. So, you guys know more than anyone how quickly now we're getting these flash flood events. And so, I, we've been averaging probably four to five flood events in Brentwood Park per year. And that's 40 to 50 floods in that park. And the amount of damage that is done on a continual basis is, is a lot. It continues to add up. And so, we, we do a number of things. We try to, when we get, when we get into a flood, we lose the infield material. We've talked about that. The infield moves, the infield material sometimes moves to the outfield, creating a lip, and that creates a situation. You can't really do anything to even out the outfield because you have all that silt in. And if you kind of look at right field right now, we had to use a rock hound to get out all that debris from the last flood, and we tore up all the grass. So, we're just doing the best we can. And more than anything else, compaction, we can't get water to, to filtrate when the ground gets compacted so hard. So, what do we do? We introduce field material pretty much throughout the season. We do the best we can. As, as we find low spots, as we have puddles, we, we fill those with dirt that we, we bring in. We try to level out the low spots in outfield as best we can, being cognizant of all the work or all the gains are happening out there. We work at times removing the lip of the infield between infield-outfield. We'll do that on a regular basis, and we aerate the outfields, trying to change that soil composition, trying to get a little bit less compaction in there. When do we do it? We typically do it in the wintertime. High school starts in February, last week of February. They run through May. Our adult softball leagues start in early April, in two weeks, actually. So, those, be getting on those fields now. So, our time is really November through February. This year was not a good year. If you remember, it was a rainy winter. We had rained one or two days a week all, all season. We were talking about that in, in the, one of the construction reports, our monthly report with Navigate, how much rain we had this winter. And that made it more difficult for us to try to do work, especially on field number one. So, we, you know, we, can I look in front of you and say, "I'm, that, that's a great field. I'm so happy to be my name associated with it?" No. Do we know there's work to do? Yeah, and we keep working on it. Some of the things we talked about, the mound, I know that, that question came up, and I can tell you that my park superintendent, who is a coll, was a college baseball coach and, and is a, a great field guy, he assures me that that, the rubber's 10 inches above home plate. They get out there and they measure it with tape and everything else. So, that is a, a regulation-sized mound. We, I know that high school did have questions about it. The AD contacted me. We offered to meet his coaches out on the field last Wednesday. Fortunately, they didn't show up. We are asking, we asked the AD if he wants to reschedule, and he's talking to his coaches if they want to come back out and have a conversation with us. As you know, this has been an ongoing issue. So, I know they talk about, talk about how the field playability has been in the past few years, but a little quick thing that my staff reminds me of is that it's been ongoing issue since at least 2008. And 2008 is when park maintenance got moved from parks into public works, apparently because of the field conditions. In 2016, we moved it back into park and recreation, primarily due to the maintenance being done throughout the entire park system. So, it is something that we can try to do, continue to work better, try to make sure that we have the best facilities, not only at that park, but Oak Tree Park, all of our other parks. I am, I'm proud of the park system that we have. I'm proud that we've made a lot of improvements in the last 10 years. I can go on and on, and that's not what I'm here to do, but I am proud of the work we do. I know there's still work to be done in our park system, and I am excited about the master plan, which will be some of the things we talk about, not only Brentwood Park, but the entire park system. I'm incredibly excited about Mount Calvary Park and what we're gonna be doing with that system. So, what do we do with Brentwood Park? There's different things we can do, and we've talked about it. The best thing is try to figure out how to get water running the proper way through that park. Can't fix the flooding in Brentwood Park, we're always gonna be having this challenge.
You, I just want to interrupt you. Brentwood Park, you mean Brentwood Sports Complex?
Yes, I'm sorry. Brentwood Sports Complex, you're correct. Sorry. Back and forth, old and new. The sports complex. We can't get water running in the sports complex the proper way. It's gonna be difficult. My prayers and dreams for the past five years that what we do in Brentwood Bound would have a correlative effect on Brentwood Sports Complex. We didn't, it was not part of what the engineers looked at. That was not part of their, their role and their job. But I can tell you that we have not had water in that park this year. We've had some pretty heavy rain events. And so, I can't promise we'll never have flooding down there, but I'm hopeful that what we've done in Brentwood Bound will have that correlative effect in the sports complex. If we do that, we can figure out when we do have larger rain events, how to get the water running the proper way. I think that goes a long way into helping fix that park completely. We can do other things yearly. We can laser level the fields. That's what we just did at Brentwood, to field number one. It's about $20,000 a field. We're talking $60,000 to $75,000 a year. A good example that we came up with today is it's, it's much like buying a new car. Once that, once you do it, it depreciates automatically because once you drive it off the lot, and once you get that next flooding event, you've lost all the money you put into it. We can renovate the entire sports complex. We've looked at that time before. We've actually did a study before what that would take. And doing, due to the, the flood issues, the water issues, we decided it wasn't the best use of the funding. We had tons of other capital priorities that were more important, and that had a better return of investment than doing the sports complex at that time. So, that is where we're at. The, the last thing is the master plan. That's another excellent opportunity. We had our first master plan meeting today. It was our kickoff meeting. We had the facility people here today, so we walked the rec center, and we also walked the Brentwood Sports Complex. And we had a long discussion, I think Alderman Gould told us out there, we had a long discussion about our current situation, what the challenges are, and what we could do to look at possible solutions for that park as well. So, it is something that I hope we will, I'm sure, will be taken a hard look at during the master planning process. So, that is the quick update. Don't want to take too much of your time.
No, I, I appreciate it, and I don't want to rehash everything because I know you, you presented already to the Public Works Committee on this. Is that correct, Chairman Weggie? Yeah. Every month. So, again, this was more for the benefit of people who may not have been following the Public Works Committee. I know there's, we have a lot of meetings, and it's, it's, it's a lot to ask the residents to, to watch all of those. So, I thought this would be a good opportunity for you just to come up and summarize everything that you've told the Public Works, Works Committee. And I know there's, there's been some ideas of floating a synthetic field down there for Field 1. I'm assuming that doesn't work because of flooding and...
Yeah, until we figure out the, the water. I like to tell the Public Works Committee is that I can do anything with money. And, and if we, you know, funding is, is, is not an option. If I have no limits on funding, we can do a lot of things in reservoirs or storage areas for water that doesn't allow the water to seep out. Put artificial turf on top of that. You're talking multimillion-dollar projects. So, I'm being, you know, we look basically from pie in the sky to what we can feasibly do, and ultimately, we're usually somewhere right around the middle.
Okay, and to, to summarize then, as far as Field 1 is concerned, after consultation with the, with the high school AD, the decision was to go ahead and, and hire a company to, to take a look and address the infield portion of Field 1, and that has, there have been repairs made to the infield already?
Correct. The dirt infield is, is, like I said, it's probably the best shape I've seen it in, in the ti, in the time I've been here. And that's because we had a, a company that could come out and level that properly. Unfortunately, my staff just does not have the skill set for that or the equipment.
And we've, you've, we've outsourced the repair of, if you will, of the outfield again, but that's, we're gonna wait until after Brentwood Days to do that.
We'll wait sure, make sure all the carnival rides are already long gone, and then we'll work the process of ripping up the turf, leveling out the outfield, and then putting in new sod.
And finally, Fields 2 and 3, those are primarily, if not exclusively, used for adult softball leagues?
Yeah, the high school uses it for their softball team as well. Field 3. But yeah, we, we have been able to do some more work on those, and so, we feel we're in a good spot. We're, you know, we, we did not laser level those, but we did.
Those are, those are fields that we're confident that we can address in-house?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions for Eric on this? Alderman Weggie?
Yeah, I mean, you, you kind of cut me off at the second base there, but I would say, you know, for all the residents that are here and are interested in this, this topic, I mean, this is taken up very frequently at Public Works. So, you know, understanding the decision, understanding the constraints. I can tell you, I personally am totally confident that Brentwood is doing what can be done for these fields with the constraints they have. And I, I think, you know, what we just went through is a great example, right? We had a plan to, to bring in a company because it's outside of our parks and rec capability. We had to do the infield and the outfield. And so, the concern at Public Works was, you know, let's make sure all the stakeholders are addressed. And that's when Eric went out and talked to, you know, the high school and asked them, "What is your preference?", and they came back and said, "Please hold off because there's no other field for us." So, there are a lot of constraints in this. If it was simply a matter of, you know, dumping a truckload of dirt on it, you know, that would be done. So, I, I appreciate Eric's efforts. You know, we're gonna continue to talk about it. I think the Parks Master Plan is, is a great opportunity. I encourage everybody here to, to show up for that. That's a very important, you know, event that we set priorities. And, you know, if it does turn out that a $3 million synthetic field is the right answer, then that will come out of all that activity that I encourage everybody here to, to show up to. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Gould?
Yeah, the only other thing I'd like to just make a finer point on, when we talk about the infield sort of work that we've done, that was, that's, there, there's two parts to, to Field 1. There's the, there's the dirt that's surrounding the diamond, and then there's the infield grass. The infield grass itself wasn't leveled, but Eric, can you speak to what you've recently purchased and how you're gonna address that?
Thank you. And one of the reasons we did not want to do it, again, if we worked on leveling that, that portion of the field, we wouldn't have grass for the, the baseball season. So, what we're going to do is we, we made investment in a roller. It's basically a 600-pound roller. You fill it with water, 600-gallon tank. Fill it up, and then we will hand walk that field to try to compress, you know, level it back out a little bit. It won't be perfect, but it'll be better where it's at right now. I believe that purchase came in yesterday.
And then you're also...
Shockingly, sorry. Shockingly, it was back ordered for months, much like everything else in this world.
Right. So, you had already had that, that purchase in, in progress. You just got it in, so that will help improve in, as we move forward. And you're gonna be able to do that in between games and everything, correct?
Yeah, talking to the Parks Superintendent today. There's games today and tomorrow, and then we're gonna try to get out and roll at either the end of this week, depending on the rain, or early next week.
Then, we're just at our first start of growing season for grass, so presumably, there isn't a whole lot. It doesn't seem in the infield, a whole lot of weeds, but we're gonna get some turf growing up.
Yeah, what we have is, we have a lot of Bermuda in there right now. And Bermuda needs a little bit warmer temperature before it greens out. So, we should start seeing that green up here pretty shortly. We couldn't oversee this year because we didn't have the timing based on all the weather and things like that. But we will continue to kind of oversee with rye and fescue to try to get a, a cool weather grass and a, a warm weather grass on that field at the same time.
On the infield. Yep. Okay, great. So, while the outfield is gonna be, is what it is, the infield will progressively get better as we go on. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, great. Thank you so much, Eric. Brings us down to the consent agenda, under which we have five items. Are there any requests to remove any of these items? Are there any questions about any of the items under the consent agenda? Seeing none, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Weggie?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neal?
Yes.
Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
Motion carries by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Takes us to Old Business, under which we only have one item, and that is Bill Number 6453. We've already had a first read on that. Mr. City Attorney, can we have a second read of Bill 6453 by title only, please?
Bill Number 6453, second reading and consideration for adoption, an ordinance adopting new processing permitting, inspection, and similar fees for development and constru, and construction activities in the City of Brentwood, Missouri.
Thank you. Can we get a motion to perfect Bill Number 6453 in ordinance form?
I'll move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to perfect 6453 in ordinance form. Any discussion? Roll call?
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Weggie?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neal?
Yes.
Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
By a vote of eight to zero, Bill 6453 will become ordinance number 5084.
Thank you. Let's go down to New Business. We have three items. The first up actually is a resolution, and that is Resolution Number 1432, a resolution approving a change order to the Professional Services Master Agreement with Navigate Building Solutions for Owners Representative Services for Brentwood Bound. Eric?
I'm back. So, we're looking for a change order for Navigate. As you know, their contract for flood mitigation Phase 1, Phase 2, and GRG Connector A ended at the end of December. And so, this change order is just to continue to utilize Navigate for these services moving forward.
We have any questions for Eric on this? Now, yes. Alderwoman Tice?
So, I have, I have one question, just to clarify. They've been working longer the past few months, and the previous extension covered that. Are we getting money from FEMA? Can you, I know you've told us and I multiple times, but can you clarify reimbursement from FEMA that might help to pay for some of this?
We have requested funding for FEMA for this. We have requested funding for FEMA for this and a couple other things related to Brentwood Bound. We're in discussions with FEMA right now. They have a different viewpoint than we do, and so we're trying to come together on the, what is the proper view. So we are hopeful, and we'll continue to work with them and be able to receive that money, because we feel like it is something that, feel like something FEMA should cover.
But we don't, we don't know that yet?
No.
Okay.
They have not approved or denied the request yet. It is in review.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Now, can we get a motion to approve Resolution 1432, please?
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Plovka? Alderwoman Tyce?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Wegi?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller? Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Alderwoman O'Neal?
Yes.
Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
Motion carries by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Takes us down to Bill Number 4655. Can we get a first reading by title only, please?
Bill Number 6454, first reading. An ordinance of the city of Brentwood, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and/or city administrator to execute the attached 2022 Community Development Block Grant Municipal Housing and Community Development Supplemental Cooperation Agreement.
Hey, more time.
I'll take that.
Okay.
The city of Brentwood participates through, with St. Louis County, in the Community Development Block Grant, and this is to approve the 2022 Community Development Block Grant allocation to the city of Brentwood. So that amount stays at 20,000. However, the allocation per applicant has increased from 5,000 to 7,500. Whitney also tells me that there is no one in the pipeline, so we are promoting this throughout the community so that residents that have interest in doing repairs such as roof repair, heating, cooling, plumbing, electrical work, don't have to wait in line. There's no one in front of them. So 7,500, 7,500, and then if there is a request for 5,000, that will also be allocated and awarded to someone as well.
Just out of curiosity, do we know how it went last year? Out of the 20,000 Community Development Block Grant, how much of that was used?
Those applications, but I haven't gotten word on that yet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, we are not voting on, we're not asking you to approve this tonight, are we? No, we're not.
It says first and second.
First and second, so we are.
Move item, I've got move item for second reading at upcoming board meeting.
I'm showing first and second. I'm showing first and second.
I got it as item number C.
Come to C.
The letter C.
It's C.
I think we leapfrogged.
It's B.
We skipped B.
Right.
B is 64, B is 6455, isn't it?
Yes, but that's about the fence.
Oh, but, okay, so we read 6454.
Up to here.
Okay.
Refresh.
All right, got it. Refreshed. There we go. Okay, we would like to have a second read on this tonight. So can we get a motion to that effect, please?
I'll move. Second.
Got a motion and a second for a second read. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, can we get a second read of Bill 6454 by title only, please?
Bill Number 6454, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance of the city of Brentwood, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and/or city administrator to execute the attached 2022 Community Development Block Grant Municipal Housing and Community Development Supplemental Cooperation Agreement.
Thank you. Can we get a motion to perfect Bill 6454 into ordinance form?
I'll move. Second.
Got a motion and a second to perfect. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No, I'm sorry. Let's do a roll call. Just checking you. Roll call.
Alderman Plovka?
Yep.
Alderwoman Tyce?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Wegi?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neal?
Yes.
Alderman Shelton?
Yes.
By a vote of eight to zero, 64, Bill Six, Bill Number 6454 will become ordinance number 5085.
Great. Now we're down to Bill Number 6455. Can we get a first read by title only, please?
Bill Number 6455, first reading. An ordinance regarding fence and wall regulations of the city of Brentwood.
Thank you. Whitney?
Good evening again. So this is a text amendment looking at all of the city, the city's fence regulations under Section 400, 020, as well as Division Five, fences and renaming, including fences, walls, and screening devices, as those were all always included, but we just wanted to reorganize it to make it more clear and take out any cross-references that are unnecessary, that's handled by the building code or elsewhere in this chapter. It also amends the swimming pool sections just minor so that it meets with the building code. The Planning and Zoning Commission didn't feel like it was specifically necessary to include a site-proof fence, if that's not what a resident really requested or needed in some areas. So we just made it with the building code for public safety, so.
Have any questions for Whitney on this matter? Alderman Lockmiller?
Whitney, I'm looking at Section 400, 2400, and then Item A, the first sentence, I think that's referring, it's referring to subsection D, but I think that's supposed to be 2410. Am I reading that right? Because there is no D in 2400.
Yeah, it should be 2410. Sorry.
Okay, and then, so that gets into special fences. I'm just curious as to why fences, I guess we don't allow fences in the front yards currently, at least since 1985, and...
Did, we did, the current code allowed a fence within the front yard setback as long as it was two feet high, or two and a half. So the, and it was decorative only. The board felt that that should go up to 48 inches and remain 50% open, and that can be within a front yard setback, but anything else would require variance. Yeah.
So it could be wrought iron, it could be picket fence?
Correct.
And each individual could have their own, whatever they decide they want to pick in their front yards?
Correct.
And that would go all the way to the street? I mean, to the sidewalk?
To their property line, which is generally adjacent to a sidewalk. Yes.
So the entire perimeter could be fenced, with the front just being four feet, and then the back could be privacy fence of what they're choosing?
Correct. As long as it's not a corner lot or a double-fronted lot that would have a front yard setback equivalent, in the zone, equivalent to the zoning district requirement, generally 25 feet. Those would also have to be four feet, but anywhere else, it could be a six-foot solid fence or whatever they wanted to.
And there was any concern about possibly locking that front fence that were, I'm sure our fire department can get through anything, but slowing down any rescue or anything of that nature going through the front?
No, it does, all fences are required to have a gate for fire access, fire and police access.
But they can lock it if they want to?
It's just a simple latch is what it is, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Alderman Wegi?
So, Whitney, I'm kind of having a hard time understanding what the changes are. So it looks like there's a change in the front yard definition, and then the height, if the top two feet have 50% see-through, so you can go up to eight feet instead of six feet if you're doing that, like a lattice basically on the top, right?
Correct.
Do we do anything about the clarification on screenings? Because I know, I know I had a lot of questions about, you know, is this a fence or not? Do we do anything to define those better?
That whole section, which was under Section 402, 2430, it says all fences, screening devices, and masonry walls shall be continually maintained, and what was Section 402430, permanent required, it said, "No fence, screen, wall, or other exterior partition in the city shall be erected without a permit." That was actually moved up to the beginning, under, which is the new Section 42380, just to make it clear. So it's, the red line is actually in the staff report from March 8th at the Planning and Zoning Commission. That might make it easier to review.
Okay. Do we have any other questions? Alderman Lockmiller?
If the fence in front, you can see I'm not real happy about fences in front yards, but does that have to go through ARB since it is in the front?
No, the ARB does not review any fences.
All right, thanks.
Anyone else? Well, we're not asking for a second read of this one tonight. This one we're going to take up at the next meeting, the April 17th meeting, so there'll be opportunity for more questions at that time. So that gets us out of the new business and moves us down to Citizen Comments. So once again, anybody in the public care to address the board, now is the time to do so. You'll be given up to three minutes.
No one has their hand raised.
Okay. We do have a request to go into closed session tonight pursuant to Sections 610.021, Subsections 1, 2, 3, and 12 of the revised statutes of Missouri. Can I get a motion to that effect, please?
I'll move. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Alderman Plovka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Tyce?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Wegi?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?